Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Doug Chapman. I'm Mayor of the City of Clarence. It's my pleasure to welcome you all this evening to this special council meeting. If I could ask those present in the chamber to please stand for the council prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to bow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen. And I acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, acknowledge and pay respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge the continuing spiritual connection with the land. Thank you. Particularly welcome to members of the public able to join us this evening. Under COVID regulations, we can take up to 12 people by booking previously online to attend in the public gallery. So, welcome. This meeting has been broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. The link and the agenda papers are available on council's website, and Alderman Blomley is joining us this evening interactively online. It is a special planning meeting, and tonight we are sitting as a planning authority under Looper. We have two representations, one physically present and the other to be read by the general manager. And I do not need to remind speakers, I'm sure, that there's only three minutes for their presentation, and there'll be a warning tone with 30 seconds to go. We have no apologies. Are there any declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate? In that case, I'm moving to the first item in business, reports, development application at 30 Kangaroo Bay Drive.
From a point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is a special council meeting.
That's what I said.
Which allows, does it not, people to actually address the council questions to be asked, and then you bring on the item for consideration?
Look, that's absolutely right, as a matter of course. I will be inviting the one representative we have tonight.
Thank you.
Who's in attendance, whether able to answer questions.
Thank you.
But the one that obviously is not present, it'd be a bit hard to arrange for that.
Absolutely, but I just, Mr. Mayor just wanted to make sure that we followed protocol. Thank you.
Alderman Ewington?
Ah, that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
I was just gonna ask the same question.
Okay. All right, so first on, Andy Ani-Adama on the agenda. He concerns the development application of Kangaroo Bay Drive. Do I have a move in a second? What, the Alderman's recommendation? Alderman's recommendation? The officer's recommendation?
Yes.
But point of order, Mr. Mayor, do we not have this protocol where the representative speaks, and we can ask questions, and once that's concluded, then the item's brought on for consideration?
You're quite correct, Alderman James. Thank you very much. So, we can leave the moving and seconded until we do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to the two representations then.
Thank you, Mayor. The first representation is a written submission from Jenny Scott of Cambridge Road in Bell Reef. Mrs. Scott writes as follows: "I wish to see an appropriate development, not overdevelopment, on the boulevard site, page 32, council agenda. I approve of medium-density infill development, but this unique site needs more community-oriented facilities and public open space, and less private residential accommodation, and hence less traffic pressures. The council planners have given their views. However, since the proposal is discretionary, brackets, page nine, it is up to the Alderman to choose a balance between overdevelopment for private benefit and more community-focused development, all within the statutory requirements." Traffic, page 28 to 29, "Council traffic engineers have merely echoed the TIA's assertion that the local road network can handle boulevard-generated traffic, as well as Kangaroo Bay Hotel development traffic, i.e. around 2,200 extra traffic movements per day," brackets, page 22. "This simply does not make sense to local residents who already live with heavy traffic in the area, especially at peak hours. Actual evidence is needed that the extra traffic will not cause problems." At page 29, "As a local resident, it is short-sighted that wider issues of traffic in the local area are seen as irrelevant to the consideration of this development. Can discretionary powers be used here?" Overdevelopment, "The large size of the development is seen as appropriate for the area by the planners, but this is discretionary. It would be more appropriate to have a smaller development footprint, as in the community-agreed concept plan, and still within the planning scheme. Four stories of glass and concrete fronting Kangaroo Bay Drive is just too big for the area. See drawings, page two of the attachments, where cyclists in the foreground makes the building look misleadingly small, and Kangaroo Bay frontage, page 51 of attachments." At page 14, "The reasons given for four-storied buildings being allowed along Kangaroo Bay Drive rather than two seem deliberately misleading. Again, surely it is discretionary."
And we have one other?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one representation from Mrs. Denise Hoggan.
I wasn't sure if I would have an opportunity to speak, because I expected to hear today, and I didn't, I didn't get notification. So, is this on? Everybody hear me? Right, I'm here before you as a community person that's interested in this site. I have no planning expertise. All I have is my technical reading ability and my familiarity with the planning scheme. You are the planning authority. You are the ones with the discretion. But my questions or concerns come under three broad schemes, themes, I'm sorry. Bulk and scale, and these are not words from the planning scheme, the private open space for the people that are going to live there, and the issue of potentially contaminated soil in the area. And I'd like to address these in terms. I have attempted to integrate what I can from the planning scheme and from the officer's report. But looking first at the officer's report, and for the particular purpose zone in Kangaroo Bay, there's a performance criterion quoted, P1A, "The height of buildings are to be consistent with the zone purpose statements, local area objectives, and desired future character statements." And the officers have addressed some of this. But I'm wondering about how this development relates to the zone purpose statement. Is this the best focal point, and does it have an integrated range of tourism, recreational, commercial, and residential? Is this the best that this council can do with land that it has heavily invested in? Is this a focal point? Now, that comes from one of the zone statements, 35.1.1.1. And it speaks of an integrated range. Is it an integrated range to have 10 tenancies and 86 developments? Now, like the previous representative, I'm not concerned about the fact that there's going to be medium density. We need more homes for more people in this area.
Mrs. Hoggan, you have about 20 seconds left?
Right. Does it improve traffic circulation and pedestrian movement in the area? There's going to be between 65 and 225 people per hectare. Is this the best we can do? Private open space in the, I think it's the block G, has been pointed out to be inadequate. Should, I'll just round off.
Look, what we can do is, I'll give you the opportunity to ask questions, answer questions.
Okay. I've got more questions than answers. It's all, it's questions for, you know, how this.
So, are you happy if the Alderman asks you questions?
I would be really delighted if the Alderman asked me questions, as long as they don't want a technical answer in terms of the planning scheme.
Thank you.
All I can do is say what I've found.
Are there any questions? Alderman Warren?
Would you care to elaborate on your concerns about the private open space?
Thank you, Alderman Warren. I'm wondering, I'm concerned that if you're going to have a focal point for the area, which is the zone statement which has been written in, is it to be a place to warehouse people? And if you're not giving people enough space, are we just warehousing them? That's a high population density. It's three times the population density of our residential area. Is it appropriate that that block of units with inadequate private open space be included in this, well, icon focal point development? Should that block be moved out, and perhaps the other two blocks of townhouses distributed across Cambridge Road? Because half of the Cambridge Road townhouses don't reach the private open space criteria. And people deserve to have, I'm sure all of us have magnificent private open space.
Alderman James, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned about the particular zone and some of the standards that apply in relation to that. Are you aware of the Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan for the site?
Yes, as I understood, it was subsumed into, or it was a guiding point, council documents said, it was a guiding point for the development of the planning scheme. But what the planning scheme says is that along Kangaroo Bay Boulevard, our iconic focal area, we can't have more than two stories on the frontage. But what concerns me with that aspect, and this perhaps relates to the link between the concept plan and the planning scheme, is that there's a five-metre strip, right? Because the apartments, A, B, C, D, whatever, A, B, and C are being built along the boulevard, they're not on the frontage technically. They're five metres back. One of my living rooms is 4.9 metres wide. Is that enough space for a focal development for the area? The size of a, the width, sorry, of a suburban living room. Is that appropriate? Now, you have the discretion in this. Will that allow the integration, I know the planning scheme says this somewhere, the integration of the activities between the 10 commercial tenancies, right, which is only 10, oh, and a museum, compared to 86 dwelling spaces? Is the balance right? Is there enough space for activities in that less than this, five metres, smaller than this council chamber? How much integrated activity is going to take place there in our Kangaroo Bay focal point?
Were there any other questions? Alderman James, and then Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mrs. Hoggan. I'm interested to hear your points on traffic, because I actually probably will agree with you. So, could I hear some of your points?
Well, with respect to traffic, as I understand it, planning schemes just get subsumed into traffic engineers' reports. But it comes back to density and scale and the total usage of the area, and the fact that you have discretion. But as the previous representative pointed out, you know, we've got, what did I say previously? Because I did calculate it, 200, between 65 and 225 people per hectare living in that planned site, if it goes ahead as planned. Three times normal residential density in that site. Now, that site's a big attraction. People walk there at the moment. There are markets there. Traffic is going to increase from all places. It's not just this residential development medium or high density which we need. We need that higher density, but we also need highest quality. And it comes back, the focal point, the zone purpose statements, an iconic focus point for the Kangaroo Bay area, something that's, where the buildings are not looming over, but they are making that focal point. And traffic will be drawn there. It gets busy at the moment. There are times even now with no buildings there, no hotel, that most of the traffic spaces are moved up, are taken up. I know that because on a number of occasions in recovery from some surgery, I drove down there in order to do, go walking on the formed paths. So, people are using it currently. With that population density, there's going to be a great more use.
Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Hoggan, I believe you also mentioned a concern with contamination. Now, I know that's addressed in the officer's report, which I'm sure you've read. Is there anything additional that you wanted to add to that?
It was one of my concerns, and I was just reading the condition in the printed agenda, and that was somewhat satisfying to know that that condition is there. And it's a question that I have to ask you, because I don't know. Is the appropriate time for that investigation, is it before a building permit's applied, or is it before a development permit is applied for? Should that investigation have been done already? Now, that land, I happen to know, is shown in the Hobart, sorry, Tasmanian Geological Maps. It's filled land. It's got the code HMM. It's material that's been deposited by humans. Says by men, but I'm not sexist. It's fill. In other words, it's fill. And I'm wondering, as a person with a background in environmental chemistry, what is that fill? Is it full of coal wash? In which case it's volatile organics, polycyclic hydrocarbons? Is it full of lubricants from the old Broadway siding? There's no way. Perhaps it could even be mine tailings. I don't know. Should we know before development application is approved, or is it appropriate to do it? I'm so delighted to see that it's definitely got to be done before there's a building permit, but is that too late?
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Alderman Kennedy?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Hoggan. And obviously, you're very familiar with the report. And for someone that's lived in the area for a long time, I just wondered if you had some concerns also about the storm water management.
I was trusting on the storm water management. I was trusting that the council's engineering department would look into it. But I'm sure that's a question for you too, because storm water, as we've found with Howra Beach, and that area that's costing council a lot in investigations, storm water is incredibly toxic. It can contain asbestos. Once again, it can contain volatile hydrocarbons. And the fact that you've got a slope, the apartments come up about 14, 15 metres from Kangaroo Bay Boulevard. Then you've got the escarpment, which is only seven metres. Then you've got a rise of a gentler slope up to Cambridge Road, where the contour lines are wider apart. And that slope, I think somewhere in the report, it says it's one in eight, it's going to need a lot of good storm water controls. Now, drawing again on that environmental chemistry background, you've got a lot of things that can come into that storm water that the general public doesn't consider. Asbestos from brake linings, once again, hydrocarbons, though hopefully that'll be cut down as we get more electric cars. But still, you've got lubricants, and storm water is much more of a nasty than members of the general public think. So, I suggest that that raises questions for you. Are the storm water measures adequate? Because I'm not an engineer. I just know about the stuff that flows through the pipes, not the nature of the pipes and detention basins themselves.
Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a plan, Hoggan, of the actual area in question. And the area outlined in the sort of dark mauve is council land, and that is the actual boulevard site.
Yes, I familiarise myself.
With that.
Yeah, with that.
As a concerned resident and citizen, are you aware that the council is, or the mayor and the Alderman and the citizens of Clarence are the owners of this land?
Yes, yes. And I'm aware that it's.
Alderman James, that's not relevant to the planning.
No, well, I'm about to come to that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if you could explain why it's relevant as a planning owner?
Yes, I can indeed. So, it would be a difficult task to sort of weigh up, would it not, the question of how this land ought to be developed, given that this council and the people and the citizens own the land.
The question is, Alderman James, the question is out of order. Are there any other questions?
Okay.
Mrs. Alderman, thank you very much for coming along.
Thank you for your time.
And being part of this.
I would just like to wrap up by saying.
Look, I'm sorry, but there's.
How will you balance the demands of P1A?
Can I invite you to stay to listen to the debate, please?
Oh, yes, I'm definitely. Oh, yes, I'm definitely-
Thank you.
I'm taking notes.
Alderman Newington?
I'm standing by if you do, uh-
Um, well, I believe we are at that point in time, so, uh, moved the officer's recommendation.
Thank you.
Second to Alderman Blomley. Sorry? I've got an echo there.
Yes, he's second.
Alderman Newington?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, well, I have to, I'll start with some of the issues, um, about my support for the development as a whole, and I'll address some of the issues in relation to some of the concerns, uh, some of them have been raised now, and some of that my colleagues have discussed over the last few, uh, few meetings that we've had. Um, overall, I think this is a project that, um, you know, is badly needed in this city. I mean, it's been vacant for all of my lifetime, all of my-
Alderman Newington, it is important to stick to the planning-
I agree, Mr Mayor, but I mean, considering of the, uh, the benefits that come to the community, you know, that, you know, come out in other, uh, other debates, so, look, you know, we, we talk a lot about, um, you know, housing affordability and housing, um, you know, our role in that, in that space, and I think, you know, bringing on some, some, different types of housing in our city is a very important thing that we need to consider. And the bottom line is, I mean, this all comes down to one thing, which is, you know, someone's definition of development versus another person's. But bottom line is, this is a planning issue, that we have qualified staff that, that are, that are paid and employed by us to interpret the information that's put in front of them by the proponent in this situation. And the bottom line is, they've gone through the, uh, you know, gone through the proposal with the fine-toothed comb, and come back recommending approval. And that's the one fundamental point that I think, yeah, I want to, um, reinforce here now, um, and to my colleagues, is that that, that's what we're faced with here. Now, you know, the other thing is too, the proponents of the, or the, um, the preferred developer that we appointed to, to come, go through this process, um, I noted in some of the preliminary notes, I mean, this started back in two thousand and four, to look at what we're going to do with this site specifically with, with council at the moment. Um, you know, and even in recent years, we've seen this come backwards and forward to us over the last eighteen months, maybe two years, with various, um, um, options put to us. The bottom line is, there has been significant redesign of some of the things that have happened. The numbers of apartments has been reduced, the consideration of the community have been taken into account, uh, the need to try and minimise the impact on the community and the bulk and scale of this development has all been addressed, you know, by the developers from, from what I can see. And the bottom line is, it comes down to a certain level of compromise. And if it was up to me to build this development, I'd probably have more apartments than what we're proposing. But if it's up to finding a compromise that, that some of the community can accept, some of the people think's great, some, and, and a small number don't like it, well, um, I think we've certainly come up with something which I, I believe is a very good compromise in relation to what could possibly have gone through there. I mean, bottom line is, if we look at some of the issues there in terms of the, um, the scale and bulk, I mean, bottom line is, this will, because of the escarpment, this really is going to stay pretty much at three storeys when taking into account the, the escarpment that's there. And three storeys in that location is not a huge overdevelopment of that site in my mind. Um, the other side of it, when it comes to the traffic side, that's the one that sort of I, I look at and think, well, you know, the reality is, I know the car parks down there get used a lot, but as a road, Kangaroo Bay Drive, in relation to the traffic, uh, demands on there, pretty much gets very little traffic from, from a normal day. I mean, there's, there's a signal entrance at one end, there's a signal entrance at the other, and that road services approximately twenty houses at the moment. Now, to throw in another, um, up to eighty-nine apartments and, and some businesses, I don't think, um, you know, and the, these guys are, you know, the, the traffic report that's been done, and we've got a clarification on that today, and if you look at the traffic report, um, you know, which was, and the bottom line is, the assessment on the back, the proposed residential parking provision exceeds assessment against the R T A guide for both high-density and medium-density development, and allows for surplus spaces to be available for allocation to some dwellings. The proposed parking allocation, detailed in the last column of table two, shows an excess of eighteen parking spaces that are available for use by residents. In particular, these could be provided to support the two-bedroom dwellings, either by allocation and sale within each dwelling, or by lease agreement through the body corporate. But the bottom line is, you know, there, there's a process put in place to look at the specifics of the parking, and that clearly shows that there's, even though there's, there's different ways of interpreting, but the staff have come back with a recommendation that, that it complies. And as for the traffic, the same thing applies there. Now, the number of parking, and the amount of traffic coming in on Kangaroo Bay, I don't believe is going to be, um, excessive. And the reality is, these types of developments, which are pretty, which are pretty much new for, for Clarence, the whole aim is to get people using their cars less. So the point is, if we're going to have people living closer to services like ferries, buses, being able to walk to Eastlands, walk into Bell Reef, they're not going to need cars. So if we're going to have less cars on the road, we need to have high-density housing, we need to have them in locations close to all services. Now, we're doing that. So to then want to turn around and add more car parking spaces to a development, doesn't make sense in my mind, especially if we're trying to reduce emissions in our city. Um, now, when it comes to the public open spaces in some of those units, um, there needs to be some discretion in this sort of situation, and, and, and the staff have quite, quite clearly argued why they think it's okay to, um, to consider that the apartments up, all average around about the thirty-three square metres per apartment. Now, if I find my notes on that one. Open space. Um, and the recommendation here from the staff is, the proposal meets the acceptable solution for site coverage, hang on, sorry, the, the six proposed townhouses have private open space areas of approximately thirty-five square metres, which is considered to be appropriate for the high-density living provided.
Thank you, Alderman Newington. Alderman Blomley?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and, um, definitely the opportunity to insight remotely.
Can we, uh, just a moment, please, Alderman Blomley? Can we lower the volume a bit, please? It's, uh, you're booming in. Okay, let's try again.
Okay, is it, is it better?
Thank you.
Great, um, well, thanks for the opportunity to attend remotely this evening, and, uh, I'm sure, Mr Mayor, that we would all agree with, um, uh, some of what Mrs Hogan had said, particularly the part about the area in question being iconic. It is an iconic part of our city, it is truly a special place, and as such, I'm sure we'd all agree that it's essential, we get it right. Uh, for an area as special as Kangaroo Bay, there simply is no room for second best or near enough. The recommendation before us this evening is a culmination of some seventeen years of work. And throughout this process, community consultation has been extensive. Now, as we know, with all these types of iconic developments, we're known to support and those oppose, and that's a beauty that the democratic citizens will enjoy. And we have our role, sitting as members of the planning authority, with clear, Christmas clear. Hundred developments were appointed to the preferred developer in May two thousand and eighteen, and over the past three and a half years, as Alderman Newington mentioned, they have extensively engaged with the community and with council. Based on this consultation, market knowledge and commercial realities, what we have before us this evening, the officer's recommendation is truly iconic. Mr Mayor, put simply, this ticks all the boxes. In my view, the issue is really quite simple. Do we step up, or does City Council make a sensible, long-term strategic decision in the best interests of our city? Or do we stop the way and squander the opportunity? Mr Mayor, in my view, this is a trial for Clarence to come of age. We must be open for business, and we must welcome iconic developments such as this. And as such, I wholeheartedly support the officer's recommendation, and urge all colleagues to do likewise.
Thank you. Other speakers, please. Uh, Alderman Walker?
Look, uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I, uh, note the comments of the mover and the second comments that in large parts, but not exclusively, I do agree with. Um, there is one element that I have some trouble around, and it's been consistent in other times with this council, uh, which is why, uh, I did reflect on things and why I did circulate an alternative motion. It is, uh, if you like, an amendment to the motion here, and, um, I might not have been first or second to my feet, your worship, but, uh, I would like to request of the motions' mover that, uh, they incorporate the extra element of my alternative motion, which was the cash contribution of four hundred and twenty thousand, um, be provided in lieu of the forty-two, uh, car parking spaces shortage, et cetera. Now, I can, I can read out the rest of that paragraph if they wish.
Alderman Newington?
No.
Okay.
Um, well, and, and that's, that's fine. It's a, it's a slight disappointment, because, um, there is so much that is, um, good about this project, so much that is good, and I think it can be a unifying thing. And when we look at it, I think we think about it as providing a linkage. So we have the commercial heart of Clarence as Rosney Park, and as you go along the, the boulevard, if you like, along, on that road, you start getting to more of the recreational area. And this is, is a great mix of, of residential and commercial. And, and I do think the mix is right in relation to the questions that were posed to us. I do think it is right, um, that there is, you know, some elements of commercial and, and, and the residential. Um, now, I'm disappointed that the, the parking contributions weren't there, because SIPs as plain as day says they should be. And, uh, I will, will speak more if time permits to talk about some of the shortcomings I have with the RMS guidelines that are taken from the great premier state of New South Wales, um, but they don't talk about, uh, regional cities. Now, if these things were talking to us in the context of what happens in Newcastle, Wollongong, look, I'll take Geelong, uh, maybe at a pinch even Canberra, these would be more pertinent and more germane to, to medium density here. And, and those cities are experiencing it and do have that. Um, but this is just a, you know, a, a, and as a, as a whole document. So, um, I want this project to happen, um, and I think it should happen and it must happen, but I'm foreshadowing that if this motion is unsuccessful, I will move the alternative motion. I think that on the el- on the elements of community acceptance, on the basis of SIPs, that that contribution is necessary, and I'm in the unfortunate position of having to abstain for this motion that's before me tonight, and if unsuccessful, as I said, I foreshadowed that alternative.
So, Mayor, can I raise a point of order? Um, it's just drawn to my attention that Alderman Blomley appears to be talking to somebody off-screen, and I'm finding it very distracting, so could I just ask him to stop that while, uh, Mr Alderman Walker is, uh, making his speech, please?
Uh, I wasn't aware of that, but I, uh, would ask Alderman Blomley, uh, uh, to, uh, please respect, uh, the protocols of the chamber as if he were in it. Thank you.
Look, um, the vote will be the vote. What I would hate to see is a situation of a, a, of a deadlock tonight, where a six-all situation, um, arrives and a vote not occurring. And I've just, just for clarification, I would ask you, Mr Mayor, if that situation did arise, what the outcome would be?
Um, well, if we're unable to come to a conclusion around this table, either for or against the proposal, then I would ask the general manager whether or not, uh, we were likely to get an extension from the, uh, proponent in the first instance, so that we've got further time to consider the motion.
And were that, and, and were that not granted, what would then happen?
If that were not granted, uh, the decision would be made by the delegate, under delegation made by this council, to ensure that a, um, an application doesn't proceed directly to the tribunal, uh, without any dealings by this council, which would, uh, result in all costs of all parties being warned by this council.
Yeah, look, I'm, one lives in hope, and, and it is my hope that, that a majority decision can be arrived around the table. And I think taking in the SIPs requirements, uh, looking at the fact that, um, we're just looking at one New South Wales document that appears to be Sydney-centric, that by incorporating the parking contribution that is suggested and required by SIPs, um, that this will be the, the great outcome that, that it can be. So, uh, I look forward to the rest of the debate.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Mr Mayor, if I may, if I may, in answer to Alderman Warren's point of order?
Uh, look, uh, not, not at this stage. Alderman Blomley, uh, there is no point of order at this point in time. Uh, my comments to you, um, response to that point of order was conditional, that, uh, I would ask you to respect this chamber as if you were actually physically in it. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Evans?
Thank you, thank you for the call. Um, and yeah, just to acknowledge the hard work that's gone into, um, having a live stream tonight. I think it's a positive step for democracy, and I believe other councils are watching us to see how it actually works. Um, I really am getting up to echo the comments from Alderman Walker. Um, looking at this site, it is ripe. Um, it's close to public transport, it's close to all the services that people on the eastern shore require, it's close to shops. Now, I get the comments from Mrs Hogan in the debate, in the, uh, deputation about the, the, the battle between density and quality, um, and also the issues around traffic and bulk, uh, but then you have to pit those against the scheme. Where my sort of issue comes in is that, um, I don't think that you can, uh, accept the recommendations when it comes to parking, and I'll get into that, uh, a little bit later. Is this proposal for that land how I would do it? No, it's not. Um, but how often do we say that about development applications, whether they are in the, in the, uh, millions, tens of millions, or even, uh, much smaller dollar figures? Balancing that around the, the arguments around density with the fact that we have a crisis in housing, and I know these are top-end houses, but it's always part of the mix. If this is done well, it's a shot in the arm for Clarence, and in, and especially our, uh, inner city. But if it's done poorly, uh, we really leave a bad legacy. And I just want to come back to the, the parking ma- maths, is that this is a solution that's come from an inability to actually provide the acceptable solution. So what we've now got is, to the way it reads to me, is retrofit something from New South Wales to, to our situation. Now, the residents need parks. At the price we're talking about, you are, if you can afford a park here, you can afford a car, in fact, maybe two, if there's two of you, if you're a professional couple, or indeed just housemates. So I don't buy the argument that, uh, they'll use public transport, because I believe that the public transport, while making, uh, good strides in Tasmania, potentially with things like the ferry, is still nowhere near a place where, uh, people in a professional environment are going to be relying on it, um, consistently. Um, so the residents' number needs to come up. That pushes the, uh, business number over the top, which is why we need to be applying the SIPs, or, uh, as, uh, Alderman Walker calls it, uh, to apply appropriate parking in lieu. And let's think about other places where we've done this. We were going to do it to the pavilion around on, um, uh, just, uh, further around past, uh, Bell Reef. Uh, we have applied it to cafes, we have applied it to, uh, restaurants, um, very recently and for significant figures. How can we possibly look those people in a straight face and say that we gave a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar free kick to, we don't even know who, who's going to run this, and what, which businesses are going to go in, and how much each of those is going to have to contribute? I think that's vastly unfair to, uh, other businesses, and it creates an uneven playing field if we are tr- truly like a pro-business, uh, council. Um, what is the policy worth? And how can we keep a straight face to people if we are not willing to apply it in all circumstances? Uh, Alderman Warren and I, I believe it was November twenty-ninth, and I did a bit of research, and we called for better consultation around this process, and we got it. Uh, now, of course, there were some improvements made, and I think Alderman Newington referred to that. Uh, have they gone far, far enough for people? Obviously, there are some people who don't agree with that, others will take what they can get. Um, they're modest in the eyes of some, though, for sure. But I know acutely what it's like in, uh, Cambridge Road, because I've lived there. Uh, and the thing that, when I, I actually thought, put myself in the shoes of, of someone living there now, could I deal with the bulk, potentially? Could I deal with the traffic? Look, I don't agree with everything in the traffic report, but it's a busy place. Could I deal with the problems that parking in that area already with the overflow from this development? Absolutely, I could not. It would be like the, the bad old days when you used to go to Bell Reef to the cricket, and you parked halfway up to here in Howra. That's essentially what we're going to do every day along Cambridge Road in Almond and Alma Streets. So no, with a straight face, I can't, A, look at residents and tell them this is why they're going to have a, a multitude of cars parked outside their street going back and forth through this development, and B, look at businesses that have faced the exact same criteria and tell them that it doesn't apply to their, um, uh, potential direct opponents. I just think in the interest of fairness, uh, this is how we should apply it. And I'll be supporting the foreshadowed motion from Alderman Walker, because I think it's the most pragmatic, it's the middle ground, and it's the most pro-Clarence option that we have in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Peers?
No, not yet, I'll just-
You, you, you did move, is it you-
I haven't moved, I haven't moved this way, Mayor. I'm just getting some more thought, because I've got a couple of quick-
Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, may I say from the outset that it does not tick all the boxes? If it did tick all the boxes, then we would not be discussing this here in this place tonight, and therefore it isn't, it's necessary for us to make a decision in relation to this. On page eight of the officer's report, it says, and I quote, "In response, council commissioned an extensive process of community and stakeholder consultation, leading to the formal adoption of the Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan, Master Plan in two thousand and eight. Furthermore, the master plan has provided the framework upon which to move forward in a planned manner and to meet the community expectations for progress." and to meet the community expectations for progress. Scheme amendments critical to the implementing of the Master Plan were approved by the Tasmanian Planning Commission in 2011." This is critical to the debate that we're having here tonight. The proposal that is being considered, as far as bulk, scale and scale, and the height of the buildings, is in fact a loss of amenity, and it's also not in keeping, it's not in keeping with the originally agreed Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan for the site. Also, the proposal does not, it does not satisfy one of the clauses in relation to traffic generation, because it's by the very nature of identifying the Kangaroo Bay Drive and the impact that the number of traffic movements in that area will be, but not on the network that will actually feed into those particular areas of Kangaroo Bay Drive, namely Rossney Hill and also the Cambridge Road. There is an understatement, and there is those numbers critical because of the increase in traffic that will eventuate as a result of this oversized development in Kangaroo Bay. Also, there is a shortfall in private open space. And that's quite clear when it says that there's an area of private open space less than 24 square metres and three metres wide, and not capable of serving and as an extension of the dwelling for outdoor relaxation. This is another matter which is contrary to the planning scheme, and therefore, it's not wholly and solely based on car parking. And also, the number of onsite car parking spaces is less than the numbers specified in our planning scheme. Again, we've got the planning scheme and also the Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan for the site, and those two dovetail, there's no doubt about it. And this is why this particular proposal has the bulk, scale and size, and is out of keeping with the Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy. The other factor that comes into this consideration is that out of the blue, we received some notification that there is a shortfall of parking. We know that, and that is one of the reasons why this particular motion should be supported if I am lucky enough to be able to move it, but then right in scene in relation to the shortfall in number of car parking spaces. In relation to the height of the buildings on Kangaroo Bay Drive, they exceed three stories. And in the officer's report, it said it should generally be three stories. But they exceed that by additional height of 1.2 to 1.6 metres above the escarpment. And that again is not in keeping with the originally Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan. The whole question in relation to this is, and I believe it's been summed up admirably in some of these letters that we received, and I am going to quote, "The proposal is too big and not in keeping with the streetscape of the surrounding residential properties. If there was nineteen fewer apartments, this would make the western side much less overpowering, and then it would be more in keeping," this is it, "more in keeping with the agreed Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan for the site." So there is a question that really needs to be answered. And every aspect of this is where they're seeking discretion, not on one item, but on a host of items. And therefore, if the number of buildings was reduced, then I would support it, because I think then it would be more in keeping with the area and not necessarily over the top as this particular process is. I think it's ridiculous to actually say anything else.
Thank you, Alderman James. Other speaker, Alderman Mulder?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. On page 16 of the officer's report, there's a comment that the inter-residential area is a newly developed zone, and as such, there are no available site coverage comparisons. Mr. Mayor, this is a flaw in our new planning scheme if we haven't even considered this as part of the planning scheme, which goes into immense detail everywhere else. The new planning scheme took a long time in development, and I do not believe that such an oversight is an accident. All other issues aside, and there are many of them, as Alderman James has pointed out, this DA is fatally flawed on the basis of inadequate private open space. Private open space is vitally important to wellbeing, particularly if we're going to have children and those sorts of things. The scheme requires 50 square metres for ground floor space, and that is at least three metres wide. Just on the ground floor alone, there is a statement in here that several of these units fail. Many of them have only 24 square metres, less than half of what is required. And at 50 square metres, these are handkerchief sized at 50 square metres, and here we are, asking people to raise children on half a handkerchief. The idea, as the officer's report, that the common open space satisfies the requirements for private open space, to me, is ludicrous. Private is private. It's not something, it's not private if you have to share it with potentially 150 other residents and their guests. Mr. Mayor, on this issue alone, I think the development deserves to fail, and there are some other issues which we do. But I won't drag this on forever. I think all we have to do is find one fatal flaw, and this is it. And that is the reason that I won't be voting for this motion.
Thank you. Alderman Kendy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I recognise and respect the desire to develop the area, and in principle, I also support residential development on the site. As we all know, high density maximizes the return on investment for developers, and it will help with the shortage of real estate stock. And in some ways, you know, it would be very easy to say, just get on with it. However, I remain concerned about the density, the bulk and scale. As Alderman Mulder mentioned, the private open space, not public open space, the private open space, the number of allocated car spots, and the massive impact on traffic in an area that already suffers from congestion. I also understand that higher density residential apartments of this scale are usually developed in areas where residents are encouraged to walk to services, which they can do, but in particular, their place of employment. Now, the ferry may help a little with this, but we're years away from this being a solution to what is an ever-growing problem with traffic in the Bell Reef area. It continues to worsen. There's no doubt in my mind that most of these properties will be sold to purchasers with two cars. That's just the world we live in for now, unfortunately. And if investors purchase apartments as Airbnbs, as is likely in some cases, I'm pretty sure that visitors enjoying short stays, in fact, I know this, in our city, actually hire cars. We're already proposing 42 less parking spots than that of the acceptable solution. There's mention of on-street parking as an option in some of the neighbouring streets. This isn't acceptable at all, and it also starts to become a safety issue. Touching on Alderman Walker's comments earlier, we must surely be receiving some cash compensation for those car spots that won't be supplied. I do not believe for one moment that additional traffic flow from this development can be absorbed by the existing network. I'm very comfortable with an apartment-style development with shops and food services, et cetera, and I think that can be very appealing if we can get some of these issues sorted out. But I can't be comfortable with the legacy that we'll leave the people of Clarence. Yes, as Alderman Newington mentioned, you know, 2004, it's a long time, but there's a reason that getting things right takes a long time. And as I mentioned, I'm really uncomfortable with the 42 car spots that we are kind of giving away. I really hope we can work our way through this and find an acceptable solution. And I thank our deputations, our representations tonight, but in the words of Mrs. Hoggan, is this the best we can do? Look, for me, it isn't quite there yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think it's really important to consider good development versus develop at all costs, and also good development in line with community expectations. Now, we went to all the trouble of doing community consultation, establishing a concept plan that the community endorsed and were comfortable with, and that's not what we've ended up with. I think if you just lopped the top story off the Kangaroo Bay Boulevard, brought it down to a reasonable height, we'd be getting closer to something that the community and most Aldermen would support. But we're not there yet. Look, there's been mention that we should respect the officer's recommendation, which of course, we do respect their expertise and the work they do. But I think every Alderman at this table, with possibly one exception, has voted against an officer's recommendation at some stage, certainly in my time on council. And I would say, why are we here if not to test the recommendations put to us and to add value through our local knowledge? So I'm looking at the report, there's no mention of the impact on the property 90A, and not even a photo including this existing property, which is going to be surrounded on three sides by two and three-storey buildings. It's hard to see how it can be argued that this is not a loss of amenity for that particular residence. The number of parking spots, a number of my colleagues have raised that. It would be nice if people working within walking distance of home was a reality in this area, but it's not. And it's more likely that people purchasing these high-end apartments which we've had pointed out as medium density rather than high density, and more likely to have a higher number of vehicles, still likely to rely on their private vehicles for transport to work and recreation, because we don't have a decent public service, sorry, public transport service, particularly, yeah, we don't have a decent, sorry, Alderman Blomley appreciated that slip. You can't rely on the public transport service in the evenings and weekends, you just can't. And we know that if you live in Hobart, you need a private vehicle to get around. There's mention in the report of the ferry being available. Well, the ferry is on trial, it's available in peak hours only, so we all hope that that will change, but it's talking as if that's a fait accompli, and I don't believe it is yet. I also have concerns about the traffic impact. The traffic assessment looks at Alma Street below Cambridge Road, not above. It's a very busy road above, there's a lot of movements, a lot of school buses, a lot of school traffic. And those cars are trying to come into the road from the other side of the traffic lights. And we know now that the system is barely coping at 3pm on a school day. And if you add an event like the football, you start queuing before you even get to Eastlands to get into that road system as it is now. So I do have serious considerations about the number of traffic movements that we're adding to this area. Again, if we reduce the number of apartments by one story on Kangaroo Bay Boulevard, that would help with the parking, it would help with the traffic, it would help with the bulk and scale, and it would also help with the community satisfaction. Because is it any wonder our community doesn't trust this council? When we ask them what they would like, they tell us, and then we do something completely different. So I can't support the development as it is, but I do believe that there is a compromise where we can get something that would be acceptable.
Thank you. Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, the easy question first, recommendation two, and I'm not quite sure. The shops approved by this permit must be predominantly tourism-related or servicing maritime activities. I thought virtually any store would be tourism-related, so I can't quite make sense of that one. Now, traffic, 32 people, 32 representations on traffic. And I totally agree with Alderman Walker, we should be getting something for this. We are going to need more parking space in that area. I mean, sometimes you look at the Rossney College car park, and that's full, there's bowls on, and people are parking opposite the toilet area there in Kangaroo Bay. So you cannot tell me that we should not take a contribution. When I was down there this morning, I was actually roble that we haven't got that in, I tell you. It wasn't just a nor, I was roble, I thought, jeez, we're going to need to do something here. But also the traffic itself, the traffic itself and the conditions down there. This council, not the developer, this council has to make changes or recommend changes to state growth, to do something in those intersections. Because hopefully, with the shops going in this development, hopefully, they'll survive, and they need people, customers, to survive. So hopefully, they will get people that do drive down, because I think cars will be around for at least another 50 years or so. And they want people not only from Bell Reef, from, you know, Atogo Bay, from Gilston Bay, wherever. So I can see that we're going to have to do something with those road systems. We can't just turn the blind eye to it, I tell you that now. We cannot turn the blind eye. Now, one of the things I was pleased, General Manager, you put under loss of public land, because that needed explaining, and the comment was, "Section 177A1 of the Local Government Act defines public land owned by councils such as parks and community sporting venues. The land is council-owned, freehold title, and is not public land within the meaning of Section 177A1." Now, why I raised that, because when I'm going through this report, I get a little bit confused here when I see contamination. Now, we know that site used to be where the railway used to come in in very early days, and people mightn't realise, but there wasn't land there, because there were enormous pipes there. When I was a school kid, I used to walk across, and if you have a look at some of the photos, there's been a hell of a lot of infill just around that site. But when the train went, I mean, I don't know how much of the land is contaminated. What does worry me somewhat is a plumby-side investigation to assess the potential for soil and groundwater contamination prepared by GHND data 2020. Now, that was fine, but it says here it would warrant further investigation prior to commencement. Now, another thing that worries me a little, because we've just said we own the land, and that's what worries me a little, when I see the plumby-side investigation that the presence of marine and intertidal acid sulfate soils, now, I don't know about these, should be considered during the construction works. And if disturbance of the marine or intertidal sediments is likely, they should be subject to assessment, and this can cause health issues. So, you know, I'm reading this, and I'm thinking, contamination, health issues, and I thought that was the end of it. But you go on further, and again, potential contaminated land code. And I'm thinking, crikey, the proposal does not make this a solution for users on potential contaminated land because there is no appropriate certification that the land is suitable for the intended use, heavens above. Or an approved plan to manage contamination and associated risk to human health. Again, contamination, crikey, how many times does this appear in this report? And you've told me that we own the land. So I do get a little bit nervous when I see this. And I'm saying, General Manager, if we know the land's contaminated, and it could be a health risk.
He's speaking to the mayor and the chair.
Oh, sorry, the mayor, the mayor. Close enough, close enough. But anyway.
I'm sure Alderman James will agree with that.
If we've got contamination like that, and we know about it, and something goes wrong, who is liable?
Thank you, Alderman Pierce. Other speakers?
I haven't asked the question, I haven't got an answer yet.
You're running out of time. Any other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Newington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to think of myself as a bit of an optimist. And I'll tell you what, I think I'm probably the only one in the room at the moment. You know, I mean, I look at these sort of projects coming online, and I think, what a wonderful thing for the community. And, you know, I've had plenty of people telling me they can't wait to see it all happen. To hear some of the doom, say, predictions here from my colleagues is, yeah, anyway. But listen, you know, we've gone through three and a half years of consultation. We're using world-class designers to come up with a proposal that's been, you know, I've had plenty of experience doing, we've got planners who have assessed the project in relation to the best available information in front of them. You know, we could all be armchair experts and say that we don't agree with the type of assessment process they've used or whatever. But at the end of the day, they're the ones that spend the time looking at the information and analysing and coming back. And as far as I'm concerned, obviously, they've come back and said it's approved, and that's certainly good enough for me. Now, I just want to get on to the parking issue on that. Now, I just wanna get on to the, the parking issue on that one, just for one thing. I mean, at the end of the day, these guys are gonna be providing, you know, roughly two hundred and fifty car parks for people in this vicinity, either using the commercial premises or the residential places. Now, if you use our current um cost per car park, which I believe is about twelve and a half thousand dollars per car park, would that be right, Mr. Mayor, through you two there, junior? Or twelve and a half and fifteen?
You're trying to introduce new information in the-
No, no, but the bottom line is, well, they're already spending three million dollars on providing car parking in this project, right? Now, along with that, they're also providing, you know, some public open space for the community to use in the parklands around the building. They've got, you know, a promenade in front of the building, which the cafes and restaurants and the people are gonna mingle on and use and socially engage in. Um, they're providing related infrastructure for the stormwater and those sort of things to deal with that area there, which at the moment, the water just falls there and sits there, whereas when the development goes in, the, the stormwater will be managed a lot more efficiently than what it is at the moment. Um, you know, there's some, uh, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things that are coming that are gonna benefit the community already. To turn around and try and slug these guys with some more money for parking, I, I just can't stomach. And there's only one thing worse than a bad policy. It's continuing with a bad policy just because other people have had to deal with it and you're too scared to actually realise that it is a bad policy. I mean, I look at Belre and Kangaroo, Kangaroo Bay, Eastland, and for years before I came on council, I used to think to myself, why is that area never going ahead? Why aren't there restaurants? Why aren't there cafes? Why aren't there the sort of infrastructure I see in every other major, you know, CBD area, probably whether it be Moonee, Sandy Bay, Kingston, you know? And it's because of this parking stuff. And if we continue to slug people with this extra money every single time, we think that we're gonna, you know, these so-called greedy developers coming in, we're gonna be sitting here in twenty years' time and nothing's gonna change. You know, for God's sake, this area's been vacant for seventy pl- I don't know, long time. I've never seen anything, nothing's ever been on there. And yet we're arguing about, you know, we're trying to sort of say, oh no, they've gotta pay for car parking. As far as I'm concerned, if we're serious about wanting people to have less cars on the road and drive less, well, why are we actually making it easy by putting in more car parking everywhere? It's ridiculous. The other side of it is that, you know, car parking's gotta be looked at in a different way. I mean-
Thank you, Alderman Yonkin. So the motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Against? One, two, three, four, five, six, and one abstained. Okay. Five, six. Alderman Walker, seconded, I think, by Alderman Edmonds, was it?
Thank you, your worship. Look, um, this isn't a case of uh someone trying to slug an alleged greedy developer. There's no such inference. This is a case where we have a thing called the Clarence Interim Planning Scheme, which this is being assessed under. And that's where the numbers come from. And I didn't invent the parking uh contribution. I came onto council when it was in place. So it might seem easy and nice to just say, you know, you're pro-business and waive it. Well, what does, what does that mean for every other business that's had to pay it? Why is it okay to kick a small person, a small development, and, and at a big, big level, different rules? That's, that's not, that's not capitalism. That, that actually looks like corporatism. That's what that looks like. And capitalism's awesome, corporatism's lousy. Um, this is a great development. This is something that we should be able to get behind with a majority vote. And what is, wha- wha- what am I asking in the foreshadowed motion? Well, I'll read it out to you. A cash contribution of four hundred and twenty thousand must be provided in lieu of the forty-two car parking spaces which cannot be provided on-site. This contribution must be paid prior to the commitments of use of the landowner, must enter into an agreement in a registrable form with the council under part five of the Land Use Planning Approvals Act 1993, prior to the commitments, commencement of the use, which provides for the car parking contribution, its calculation and payment arrangement. The landowner is responsible for the preparation of the agreement and is responsible for all land titles, offices, fees and charges. You could make a case to say, well, actually, uh, they should be paying the, the Rosney rate of twelve thousand. But this is the rate in Kangaroo Bay area. That is the shortfall that's generated when we look at, when we look at this proposal. Under SIPS, um, what's been put to us in the report has not been fleshed out in terms of why it pertains and is germane in a regional Australian city like Hobart, like Newcastle, like Geelong, like Canberra. This is not Sydney. This is a beautiful area that doesn't have an industrial rail station at one end, that does not have light rail at the front. Um, there is a ferry trial, yeah, I'm aware of it. I, I do remember the Walker ferry plan, peak hour, and it's, uh, it's hopefully gonna continue after the one-year trial. But at the situation we are at the moment, um, this is still gonna be a car-dependent situation and the rules should be consistent if we are to be fair and, and ask for a reasonable outcome. Again, I talk about this proposal. This is a good news story. We are likely to see um people that live within Clarence looking to downsize and move into this area, freeing up existing larger homes for, for other people. Uh, the activation, as I said before, between uh Rosney Park and between Kangaroo Bay or Belre is going to be improved. The shops are going to be of, of excitement for tourists, but I suspect quite a lot of local uh usage as well. It is not an unreasonable thing to say that the planning scheme should be followed in, in its car parking contributions. That is, that is where this all comes down to. And as I said, such a big project, I would hope would be able to get majority support across the table. If it becomes, if we end up tonight, this proposal or the original or something else in six all, um, it's not gonna get the buy-in and respect that I think is worthy of this, this project. Now, someone put to me, is this all the optimal that it could be and could it be better? Well, these things are, if you like, in the interpretation and the eye of the beholder. But uh if I've looked at Soviet planning and design things uh overseas, I don't think that they look better than this by a long shot. We've talked about public open space. Now, it's a new style of development, but uh there is great public space, open space in the area. There is what's been allocated and has been, you know, seen to be, you know, appropriate through the planning officer's assessment. I do agree with that. And then furthermore, um, uh, I would love to be getting some vitamin D on some of those decks on a, on a nice spring afternoon. So I urge people to support this amendment. It is just asking the very modest request that the SIPS requirement be met. Seek your support.
Alderman Edmonds?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, look, I won't rake over old ground of what I've uh said previously or indeed repeat a lot of the points made by Alderman Walker, which I agree with. Um, just to say again that this is, this alternative approval is us actually sticking up for our city and our residents. And I think it's us uh being as pro-Clarence as we can be whilst also actually applying our policies. We get a lot of times, people get stuck on our, our, our policies. And um I think if there's ever a time to come out to bat for our policies, it would be in support of this motion. Cars aren't going anywhere, uh, whether they're electric or more economic. In Tasmania, they aren't going anywhere. We have a trial for a ferry that runs first thing in the morning and when people knock off work. Doesn't go over weekends, doesn't go at nights. Um, to, to sort of rely on that going forward is, uh, is, is, is um fool's gold. Um, but just getting back to the cash-in-loo policy, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Restaurants, and we're not talking about, uh, you know, we're talking about burger and chips restaurants, uh yoga studios, apartments when they've been repurposed, local cafes that are making a margin of what, like, less than a dollar per thing that they sell, have all been stuck with this policy, which takes money because they cannot provide parking. We put the money into safekeeping until we invest in appropriate parking in that area. This development is forty-two shy of where it needs to be. Now, of course, those forty-two aren't gonna apply to one business that pops up here when we've got what, however many that are supposed to go downstairs, the number escapes me off the top of my head. It's fair to apply it to other businesses as well as the ones that have already cop it. And I, I, I agree with what Alderman Walker said, is that the alternative, like, the original motion's anti-business. You're, you're basically giving a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar free kick to opponents of businesses that have already established themselves in Clarence. Pro-business is to actually stay the course on the playing rules that everyone's uh come up with. It's like changing the rules at half-time of the grand final, when you played a whole season to get where you are. I just find it unacceptable that we could not be applying our cash-in-loo pa- parking payment to this development as a, as a broad uh thing with all the different businesses that are going on there. Because we will pay, if we don't, if we don't implement the cash-in-loo, we'll pay, one way or another, we'll pay. We'll cop it over the lack of parking infrastructure, which we'll probably still pay for out of the cash-in-loo reserves, but we'll have to top up. And where's that money gonna come from? People's rates. So everyone will pay for this and then we will pay for doing that to people. I just think it's such a common sense path through the middle to apply our actual policy. We've got this policy, why the hell are we not applying it here when we apply it every other time someone wants to do something in the city? Like, that sort of free kick, I just can't come out. I will not support the original motion. I will support this because, as I said, there are issues that we might have with different things throughout the process, but we can gulp some of that down. But I'm not gulping down four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of money that should be paid, would be paid if these businesses were scattered around the parts of our city that we apply this policy. We'd be, we'd have the hand straight out. We have had this hand straight out. We've had it out since, and we've been on council since we've employed the policy. So why the hell are we not doing it for this, this uh development? It, it, the mind boggles. The mind boggles. So there's been a bit of talk about legacy. And yes, if approved, this will be part of our legacy around the table as a collective for this council. And yeah, we might cop it over bulk and scale and, and, and the impacts that has on direct uh neighbours to this proposal. And I am sympathetic to them. However, looking through the planning scheme, I just can't see how we can fight that battle. That's just my opinion. But if we really wanna talk about legacy, we're talking about nearly half a million dollars of money that's gotta come from somewhere and it should come from the people who actually it applies to. Because if it's not coming from them, it's coming from our rate base. And I'll tell you what, we talk about all the things we could invest in, in this city, playgrounds, tracks and trails, uh, appropriate uh walking tracks, toilets, et cetera. Or we can give a massive, you know, the, the ball comes in a cricket, we just let it straight through, there goes four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think it's ridiculous. There is no way I'll support the original motion, but I urge you to get behind this amended motion.
Thanks. So I'm gonna hand over to the Alderman Deputy Mayor and just make a couple of comments which hopefully will get picked up in the writer reply, Alderman Walker. First of all, um, there is contention about whether there's a shortfall of forty-two positions or there's a surplus of twelve parking positions. And I think um you've been quick to dismiss the RTA report as something that belongs to New South Wales. It is a fact that the RTA guide has been tested in Sorrel and in Hobart and it picked up by the tribunal. It's got credibility in that sense. It's been tried in places other than the mainland capital cities. It has applied in Tasmania in those two instances and we're advised about that this afternoon. So the first point I wanna make is that um the evidence before us, and we're sitting as a panel, is that there's a surplus of twelve positions, not a shortfall of forty-two. This, the, the, the criteria there and there's talk about us treating other businesses unfairly. The report explains that there is enough business for parking. There is no shortfall for parking for businesses in this proposal. All the shortfall is in residential, where this code applies. So that's the first point. In contention, the evidence before us is that there's a surplus of twelve positions. Secondly, if we did accept that there's a shortfall of forty-two positions at ten thousand dollars per position, then it would behoove us to actually have in mind how we intend to spend that money to provide, make up for the shortfall in parking at that particular location or lo- nearby to it. For example, it would be disingenuous of us and probably dishonest for us to take um a shortfall in parking, say in Lindisfarne, if we'd had no idea or plans to spend money on parking in Lindisfarne. The money is there to be taken to provide the parking that the developer can't provide. On those two reasons, firstly, the identity of the need for the parking and secondly, the uh, the reasons for taking it if there is a shortfall, I'm afraid I can't support this motion, although I do applaud Alderman Walker and seconded by Alderman Edmonds for trying to find a way through this very difficult planning item. Thank you. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying the forty-two positions. I also observed that the forty-two were residential spots. Um, and the shortfall was estimated that uh without those forty-two spots, uh roughly a third of the two-bedroom apartments would have two spaces and the other two-thirds would only have one car space. So for all those uh two-bedroom apartments that have one car space allotted and are a two-car household or have a visitor, where are those people going to park? They're going to park in the business parking spots. They're going to take up those spots along Kangaroo Bay Boulevard that are intended for patrons of the area and the businesses. So I don't think it actually matters whether they're residential or business. I think the impact is the same. So I think it is a solution, it is a problem that needs to be solved. Um, I'm not sure where that solution would come from, but I think that's something that we need to um give mind to and this is the only opportunity to um have that uh cash-in-loo um so that we can find a solution. I'm still unsure as to whether this is the right way to go, but I just thought I'd make that point, that it is a, a problem for the development as a whole, not just the residents.
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, excuse me, it's uh very interesting at the twelfth hour, if you wanna call it that, that we have this alternative motion, which is really going to put the developer under enormous pressure. Because up to this point in time, he has been unaware of any, any other uh proposal for a, a cash contribution of four hundred and twenty thousand. It's an impost on the developer. And why in the fact should that be incurred upon him? The fact of the matter is, there are forty-two car parking spaces, residential area, that are insufficient and they do not meet the code. We know that. And this particular motion that's before us is to basically hammer the developer to fork out four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think it's absurd and it's over the top and it's only one of the issues that has in fact been identified. And basically, what we would be voting on is to accept the officer's recommendation with this added recommendation of four hundred and twenty thousand. I will not support that because it's basically approving those other matters that we have spent the hour in this place on and then saying, well, they're irrelevant. But now if we hit them for four hundred and twenty thousand, goodness gracious, that means that this council wants to basically grab that money and use it for the purposes that they are short of forty-two car parking spaces. This is not the only issue that's before us. I will not vote for this because I think it's basically giving uh credence to those other issues that are contrary to the planning scheme, which we have spent, well, the last hour debating. Uh, it was mentioned this would make a good news story. How in the hell could it make a good news story when in fact we are now at the last minute asking the developer to fork out four hundred and twenty thousand? Ludicrous. Also, it was mentioned that this is a pro-Clarence, uh, pro-Clarence as we can get. But, and also it was mentioned, you know, you don't change the rules at half-time. And this is basically what you're doing. You're changing the rules at half-time at this particular hour in the night and that the determination it would be incorporated within the other uh, uh, additional conditions that, that are part of the officer's recommendation. I will not support this and I believe it's inappropriate, not only because it detracts from the other items that are contrary to the planning scheme, but it puts an impost on the developer, who at the last minute is going to be confronted with something like this, which he or the organisation had no knowledge of prior.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important for, for colleagues and the audience to realise that um this is not the only evidence hour alternate motion that we've received today. As colleagues would know, um, Alderman James also sent through uh an alternate motion this morning for refusal. So talking about eleventh-hour motions, I've received two of them today. Uh, one of them from uh Richard James, Alderman James Walker.
Can we uh keep to the topic at hand, please, Alderman Blomley?
Well, I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, when comments are made, like they were just then by Alderman James, that, that, that we are very honest with the people watching this online. Um, he wants to call that for eleventh hour. He wants to call out for 11th hour. However, having said that and explained that situation, I, for the reasons you apply, Mr Mayor, unfortunately are unable to support Alderman Walker's alternate motion. However, I do recognise his keenness to move forward. But for the reasons that you so eloquently outlined, I too am unable to support this alternate motion for the chair.
Are there any other speakers? Alderman Pears and then Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I'll just go back and see if I can get an answer through you, Mayor, about the last question I raised before time ran out. And my question was that council owns the land. The land's contaminated, we know that. If there are health issues, who is liable?
Well, I think there's a condition in there, General Manager.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, the land is, is subject to a contamination code because of its railway history. Once that land is sold under freehold, then that obligation transfers to the purchaser. And you'll note in the recommendation that the planning scheme deals with that issue of contamination going forward as a planning matter, not as a liability issue. That liability, if there were contamination and it's not clear that there is, would rest with the owner of the day.
That's all I need to hear, thank you for that, that's good. Now, let's get back to the car parking issue. Look, as I said before, restaurants, any shops there want people buying stuff there, that's how they survive. And look, I was down there today and I'm trying to nut out car parking spaces and you look at Rosney College and you look round there and there's not a lot. I'd, and as I said, when I walked along, I thought, jeez, I'm annoyed there's no car parking cash in lieu there because jeez, we've got to do something here, we've got to do something in this area. So I actually, not like some of the other Alderman, I actually congratulate Alderman Walker for putting this in. Because jeez, as we've said, we've had little restaurants that have got to pay cash in lieu, which I must admit, I totally agree. I think, I think spaces do, they want customers, I believe they should pay cash in lieu. And, but we, us provide the space where we can. This is a big development. I have no argument that if we could find the money and we've got to do something about car parking there eventually. So let's start having a look now, not in 10 years' time, as I said, the traffic's an issue, we've got to start looking at it now. Not in 10 years' time, parking's an issue, we've got to start looking at it now. Now, that may be with cooperation with Rosney College somewhere else, but you know, let's start talking, let's raise the issue, but I'm going to support this motion, I like it.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your comments about this whole thing. I mean, when it comes to the parking code, I think you summed it up quite clearly there. You know, I mean, we've talked about the planning scheme and some of the shortcomings in it and those sort of things. I mean, it's pretty unique for us to actually be talking about apartment buildings in Clarence. You know, but the thing is, we have to use some other experiences from other jurisdictions and the expert advice of our planners. And once again, I want to reiterate that the planners come back and said the parking is okay, along with all the other objections that were made by various people, you know, when submissions were called for and also from some of my colleagues tonight. But the reality is, I don't know why everyone keeps freaking out about car parking. I don't struggle that hard to get a car parked when I go into Rosney. I don't know, or Belreiv even, you know, I mean, sometimes you've got to, it takes a little while, but it's not as if you can never get a car parked. I mean, the thing is, and there's a reason why we haven't actually built a multi-storey car park yet, is because we haven't had to. You know, I mean, you know, sometimes at Friday afternoon you might struggle at peak times, but I mean, it's not as if it's that bad. And like I said, if it was that bad, we would have already acted. And to be honest, I'd prefer to spend more time talking about how we're going to deal with that issue than going round and round in circles in some of the things that we talk about at other times. The only way forward with parking moving forward is to address it as a council, as a citywide project and to look at all the options that we've got at our disposal, not just look at this one thing and think, well, God, let's slug these guys. Because that's one way of solving it, but it's not, it's not going to go away. The issue's got to come out in terms of what are the ways that we can deal with parking, where are we going to put them? And the bottom line is, it should be user pays and there's plenty of money out there to be made in parking. If we're serious about wanting people to park less, that's one of the, sorry, drive less, that's one of the levers we can use to actually encourage people to do that and use the public transports. And then, you know, maybe we might get to the point where we have less cars on the road. The other thing is, and as, as you pointed out, Mr Mayor, I mean, the businesses, it's nothing to do with slugging these businesses. It's not fair to slug the developer with more for the business because the business side of it complies. It's quite clear that that complies. I mean, the recommended number of car parking spaces, I think it was 109 and they're providing 109. It's only the residential, I mean, I look at the, you know, the rates that have been used in here by, by the planners, state either they're 23 or 18, more than, or round about 20 more than what they actually need. So, you know, I can't understand why all of a sudden this parking issue's jumped up. And like I said, when you look at the advice that's been provided to us, look at the figures that have been established and the protocol, or sorry, the policies that have been adopted by Rampat, it's quite clear that this proposal, if it went to them, they would approve it. So I certainly won't be supporting this, this alternative recommendation. I think that the officer's recommendation is still the best option moving forward. And I encourage my colleagues to consider that when they make their vote and make sure that we go back to what I believe is the right option moving forward.
Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a lot of meetings, I tend to have a lot of meetings around this city. I cannot get a park close, a block away from where I'm trying to meet. In fact, I've moved two meetings from Belreiv Key to the city tomorrow because it's so much easier to get a park. So that is just craziness. I applaud Alderman Walker for trying to forge a way forward. Doesn't look like it's going to happen, but I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. And may I just pick up on Alderman Blomley's comments that the two alternative motions plus the last-minute information on the parking spots haven't arrived in my email box yet, neither have any representations. So maybe we haven't had any around this proposal, just like to put that on record, thank you.
Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll focus on the parking because that's, I've had my chop at the others and probably getting another, a further chop. Parking for this development could be easily met if there were fewer apartments. Public open, but private open space could be easily met if there were fewer apartments. Parking could be sorted by digging into the ground, which was an original, an earlier proposal to be done. And parking could be sorted with a stack and rack mechanical system as occurs nearby at 14 Cambridge Road. And that's not a world first, by the way, it occurs in most cities which have these particular issues. The 11th hour that Alderman Kennedy refers to, I say is, is part of the issue. But what, and, and, and those ideas that I put there, we can't condition this approval. We've got to deal with what's presented to us. And that's why this pardon counts. When you look at the officer's report, and I won't go into it in depth though, they have decided that the RMA provisions, which have things like 0.6 of a car parking space, I don't know how you get that, is that a three-wheel bicycle or something? 0.6 of a parking space is, is, is not, is not because, as, and I'll, if I can pick the point up, because it isn't considered, on page 25, is, is a, although it's a higher development, it is not a high-density development. 86 flats on this area of land with insufficient open spa, private open space by any stretch of the imagination isn't high-density? Well, it certainly is high-density for this particular area and, and I think. So we've come up with a different model. You know, and, and the officers are quite entitled to do it. A more appropriate rate would be, so we've come up and we've invented the model that we've referred to. One space per one-two-bedroom unit, two spaces per three-bedroom unit, one space per four-unit visit. If those things are appropriate, why aren't they in our parking code? Why are they adjustments to the existing parking code? Mr Mayor, I can, all I can say is that even with this contribution, if it were to be made, where are we going to build them? We're going to build them a long way away from where the people live. And as a consequence, as Alderman Warren points out, guess where they're going to be parking? And guess what we're going to be doing? We're going to be going through there and our officers are going to be going down there trying to issue tickets for people parking in their own apartment block, but in a space that's designated for commercial. Now, this area, if you wanted to do anything, you would probably cut back on the commercial car parking spaces and take the cash in lieu payment and put it over there. So the people who live in these units could park near their houses and the rest of us. Because if we have a look at them and this inner residential stuff, all the modelling around it, it's, it's a place where people can walk to the shop centres. These are walking spaces serviced by public transport. And that is actually how it ought to be down there. And to suggest that we're, you know, that we're, we shouldn't, as you did, Mr Mayor, taking out, taking money from people without a clear plan to spend it immediately, then I would suggest that maybe we ought to be having a look at the failed pavilion development where we took money from people and they didn't proceed with the, this cafe development because of the cost of the car parking spaces. We should have a look at 14 Cambridge Road where the commercial part of the stack and rack system has had to contribute $60,000 for car parking that hasn't been built yet. And we keep, and there's the, the dance studio which was redeveloped into residential above. We took, I think, six car park or four car parking spaces for that and we still haven't built them. And if we do build them, Mr Mayor, what would we do with those residents? Would we build a multi-star and reserve spaces for the, for the flats as they're entitled to because they did pay for them? So I, I think that the parking, even with this contribution, is not a solution to this problem and I won't be supporting this motion either.
Rider reply, Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, Asher. Look, a couple of points, I, I note people's concern around timing. The bottom line is, this is still in the ether, awaiting to come to me. And this document was talked about in the briefing and I had to get it from another Alderman. And that's when it arrived at me, sort of a little before four or around about four o'clock. So I did my best with the time, that was before me. It didn't shed to me confounding illumination that the recommendations were right. A couple of points were made. One was, one point was made around where would this car parking occur? Well, this is, the contribution is being asked for in the Belreiv Kangaroo Bay parking area. Percy Street is not far away, it is certainly suitable for decking. And, and it's really important while we understand about this being a commercial thing rather than a residential. What has been said through this is if we apply SIPs as we should and the residential component is satisfied, then there is that shortfall and that needs to be made up under the commercial sector. If you live in an apartment block and you're taking all your shopping, you need to be close to the lift or whatever to get there, you can't just walk from Percy Street with that. If you're coming home at 11:30 at night, then I think, you know, most people understand the security and comfort of being able to park close to your house within those, within the, within the car parking situation that's there to be built. We are laboratories of democracy, as I've said before. Now, we are crimped, your worship, with planning schemes. But let me tell you that there are 29 different approaches to parking in the state of Tasmania. I, I'm not sure what Sorrel Multiplex will be quoted to me that was observed through Rimba. I don't think that there was an 86 combined apartment and commercial development in that. So as far as Hobart goes, Hobart's policy towards parking isn't to take contributions from the developers, but boy, oh boy, do they mug me when I go to that city. That is their process. Now, that might want to be announcediated more prominently if that's how people around this table wish to go. I don't. Kingborough and Glenorkie would have been more germane examples because they do actually require contributions. As I said, this is a good news story. It would just be the better for being consistent with the Clarence interim planning scheme and it would be, it would get a much larger buy-in than if we do end up approving it. But what will be seen and be brought before us forever and a day when we ever ask for another development about what will be perceived as double standards, that is going to be the lead, the deep, deep lead that gets put in our saddlebags for the rest of our time. As I said, in, in, in New South Wales, we need to look at other guidelines as well.
So the motion before the chairs, the officer's recommendation plus Alderman Walker's additional clause. All those in favour? Against? Yeah, I've got 6/5, have I missed someone? Is there an abstention in that? Can I, all those in favour again? One, two, three, four, five, and against? So I'm going to have to do it again. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six. Against? One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion is lost, six all.
The officers get to do it.
Alderman James?
I would like to move this motion that I circulated this morning. And my apologies.
Do I have a second for Alderman James's motion? Thank you, Alderman Warren.
Mr Mayor, I will be brief. I think what has been said so far is being encapsulated in the discussion. This motion is to refuse the development application for the following reasons. And in a nutshell, it does not satisfy the planning scheme because of the bulk scale and height of the buildings results in a loss of amenity of the surrounding residential properties. And it's not in keeping with the originally agreed Kangaroo Bay urban design strategy and concept plan. There is also going to be an increase in vehicle traffic generation because it will include the other streets that abound from the Kangaroo Bay Drive, Eskamand, to the Cambridge Road and the Rosney Hill. And it will unreasonably impact on the road network within that greater area. It's also been established that there is insufficient private open space and that is of the basis of 24 square metres and lacking three metres wide. And it's not capable of serving as an extension to those dwellings for the use, recreation, children usage, et cetera, for those particular dwellings. The proposal does not, is contrary to the planning scheme. As we've discussed, the number of car parking spaces is not in accordance with the Clarence's interim planning scheme. In summary, fewer apartments on the western side would be more in keeping with the originally Kangaroo Bay urban design strategy and concept plan for the site. And that strategy has been widely consulted and it has basically formed the framework for a decision through the Tasmanian Planning Commission in relation to this area. In summary, Mr Mayor, I believe that we are sending a notice, a clear notification to the community that we need to support. And this particular development, if it was reduced or the number of multiple dwellings was reduced, 19 fewer, then I would be one of the first to get up in this place and support it. Because I think that the number of building, multiple buildings is reduced to a reasonable size and everybody, I believe, from the wide net community and also within that particular area. And in particular, I would have thought that that little blob in there at 90A, which is surrounded on three sides by this development, if there were fewer developments, fewer multi, multi-dwellings, then I think they probably would be very much in favour of this as well. Because it would not impact on the bulk scaled size that they would be confronted with if we approve this development.
Thank you, Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As per previous discussion, I couldn't support the last motion because it didn't address all the, the issues that I raised earlier. I'd be really unhappy if the development goes ahead without the parking contribution, but I'd also be really unhappy if the development goes ahead without some serious modifications. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Edmonds?
Just very briefly, to get going with the parking issue, which is why I'll support this motion brought by Alderman James, is that the extra parking requirements is a consequence, and I think Alderman, on the, of the bulk of the development, be less need for spaces if there was less concentration of people and requirement for parking. A bit of talk about Hobart. I briefly resided at One Collins, where the three-bedroom apartment that we had had one car space. So you can imagine how things went for the locals around there, with all of us shifting around and trying to not get parking tickets at 8:01 AM. I think we took, there was some talk about, you know, people not knowing the rules. I think people were acutely aware of the rules when it came to parking in Lew, and I think that's why we've got what was put in front of us in the report. You know, and parking isn't, or cash in lieu isn't all of a sudden an issue, it's been worked on and the policy work's been done, and that's what was arrived at by previous council, and they're the rules that we've been given. And I think that it's important to clarify that when people say that the business element of this development complies, it's not true, because it's the, to say that the residential is short, it's the same car parks, it's the business element that is short, and as Alderman Walker touched on, they're the people who are going to be there and parking on site. The people who park and don't mind walking are the people visiting the businesses. So, yeah, I'll support this refusal, because our position on the parking is not where I would ever be able to support it. And if I'm allowed the luxury, I'll foreshadow to move Alderman Walker's motion again, and I would call on people on either side to potentially consider a middle ground where we actually get an approval and can do something that actually moves this forward, rather than a six-all vote.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman. Alderman Ewington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I suppose, I just want to quickly address a couple of issues Alderman James raised. I mean, on one hand, the planning scheme doesn't apply, and the expert advice doesn't apply, but the urban design framework is more valid. Don't know about that one, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, the planning scheme is what we're dealing with here, and we're dealing with the expert advice provided to us. And just on the other issue, I mean, look, how do we get that? Look, I think it's quite clear, my options are quite clear when I stand on this one. I mean, I think, you know, it's a fantastic development, I think it'll bring so much value to the city, give us a chance to actually move towards doing something with our city heart and linking the CBD of Rosney Park through to Belray Village, and actually creating a city in its own right and a location in its own right that we'd be proud of. You know, I'll go back and I'll remind everyone about the point I made about, you know, we just don't have that night time economy, we don't have the restaurants, we don't have the things that mean we don't need to drive our cars everywhere. That's what this is about, it's about creating the critical mass of people in the one location so that cafes can survive, even when it's not tourism time on, it's not Saturday nights, so that people in the local areas of Belray can walk to places rather than have to get in a car and go to Hobart all the time. Right? So just because we're saying we're not having car parks in this place doesn't mean it's going to create car chaos, it could actually work in the favour of the people in the community and encourage them to walk, encourage them to ride, encourage them to car share, because parking is a little bit more difficult. This expectation you can drive wherever you want to go and get a car parked at the front has got to end, you know, and I don't think it's as bad as some people make out anyway. But bottom line is, the businesses are, do comply with the number of car parks allocated there, you know, and I want to stress that. And I think that, you know, the assessment that's been made in relation to what's required in this type of apartment development quite clearly shows that they're actually in excess of what they require. So to turn around and suggest that they need to, you know, pay extra car parking, I'll never support a motion to actually, you know, charge a parking in Lew, and I certainly won't be supporting this motion to knock this proposal back.
Thank you, Alderman Chong, and then Alderman Kendy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just very briefly. I cannot support this motion. Effectively, I feel whilst the concept plan was a great thing to do and was a wonderful exercise, that was 13 years ago. Now, a whole slew of things have changed in 13 years. Kangaroo Bay Road wasn't there 13 years ago, nothing in that area was there 13 years ago. The planning scheme that we're considering this under wasn't there 13 years ago. Life has changed, and to assume that we have to do everything exactly the same way that we thought we should do in 2008 is naive. We can't do that. We need to look at what we've got now. It's also naive, I think, to say, well, if we just took a level off, it would be good. As a planning authority, we consider the development application that is before us. How many times have we said, oh, we'd like that, but if you could just do that, or if we could just move it there? And we can't, we know we can't. So coming back to constantly say, well, it would be okay if this, is just stressing for everybody, because it can never be that. We can only look and consider the application that we've got before us. Yes, I would have been happier if there was a cash contribution for parking in there. I have been consistently a supporter of the cash in lieu contribution for parking in a number of places. And yes, we have talked about behind the key building, Percy Street, on a regular basis that that's where we would be putting a car park. I'm quite sure there are people who work in Belray Village who park along Kangaroo Bay Road, because you can park there for longer, and I'm sure that that won't change, and it will still end up being a very busy place to park. And finally, I guess, from a private open space basis, I've lived in places with high density housing and medium density housing. I've lived in Hong Kong and Singapore, and trust me, people don't get stressed about a small private open space if there are other things available that they can use in their vicinity. What's a problem is there is, if there is nothing at all in the area. Of course, it's lovely if you have a big backyard, but the advantages of living in an urban area and being able to walk to the restaurant and walk to the bus and walk to the ferry are different advantages, and people trade them off, of course they do, and they can use the park across the road or the general public open space as a trade-off. And I think we have to take those things into account when we look at the officer's recommendation that says, yes, some of the buildings don't comply, but there are other ways to consider that. So I cannot support this. Thank you.
Alderman Kendy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Maybe I believe in Santa Claus, but I'm just one of these people that always love to think that there's a compromise. I certainly take on Alderman Chong's points about when we went out to community consultation. It's quite a long time ago, and the community was pretty happy with what was presented to them. However, the commercial reality of what residential property is worth today is a whole lot different to when that was put to the community at that time, as far as, I truly believe that by reducing the actual number of apartment, apartments or residences, the commercial result can still be significant for the developer.
Thank you. Is there no other speakers? Write a reply. Oh, Alderman, hold it, thank you, sorry.
Challenge of heart, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to sort of, I was appropriately, sort of impressed with the fact that we didn't use the inner Sydney R M S model when it came to the parking. And that we had to come up with our own system because we aren't inner Sydney, and we certainly aren't Singapore. Right? And I think one of the fundamental things that we often miss here is that we are a residential city at heart. We are not an urban city, we are a suburban city. And there's a lifestyle. We pride ourselves on being a livable city. Well, part of that livability is the importance of adequate open space, private open space, private open space where the kids can play in the backyard, where we can do things like that. Now, it doesn't have to be the quarter acre block, I concede that. But when we have a planning scheme that sets down some minimums, and then we decide, oh no, you know, we've got to reassess that for something else, and then you've got to have a look at it, I mean, I know we have to assess it. That's why I predicated my comments about if there were fewer, if there were fewer, but we can't do that, and that's why you refuse it. You've also got to have a look at this inner space here, you know, it's public space. We can't just wring our hands and say, oh, that's, that's the thing, we struck a preferred development agreement, we own the land. All the way through, we have had an input into this, which is a little bit beyond what it would normally be if we didn't own the land and if this was owned already something. We've gone through this exercise time and time again. Is this an appropriate place for residences at all? I would suggest not, but we've created this inner residential zone, and might I say, this development's been three years in the making. And it seems that, if you read the report, it's only possible now because recently we introduced this inner residential zone, and only recently have we come to the realisation that, oh, it hasn't got as many requirements as we would like to see. How did the developer three years ago know that we were going to introduce it in a residential zone? Because it seems to be clearly amiss if he hadn't made this zone. So I just go back to the point is that it's the lifestyle, it's the nature of this city, that it is a suburban city. It is a residential city, and its future lies not in creating a tourist economy that hardly exists in Clarence, hardly exists in Clarence. And why don't tourists come here? Because we don't promote enough of what we do and what we are. So I really worry that we are eating here and we are putting something in here, build it that the tourists will come. They don't even, they don't even stay at Port Arthur, they do day trips from Hobart to Port Arthur. What hope have we got of them doing, staying here and doing anything? So I really go back to the point is that we really need to focus on what a livable city means for a suburban city, rather than the urban city that we keep trying to create.
I think, write a reply, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In summary, the Kangaroo Bay Boulevard was created as a result of the Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan. As I mentioned earlier, scheme amendments critical to the implementing, the master plan were approved by the Tasmanian Planning Commission in 2011, following further public consultation, statutory and non-statutory. The fact of the matter is that we have the Clarence Intra and Planning Scheme of 2015, and that was included as part of the strategy, the design strategy for the concept plan. I seek council support.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is for refusal. All those in favour? Six all, lost. Look, have you, sorry. So, so, sorry, what do you want to do again?
I've foreshadowed, did I remove Alderman Walker's motion?
No, Mr, no. Look, bear with me for a moment. I don't sense that there's any movement around the table, but for the sake of us trying to get a decision on this, I'm willing to entertain just one more effort, and I'd appreciate if we didn't have to feel as though we wanted to repeat all the same arguments all over again. So Alderman Walker, you seconding?
I'm happy to, anyone else is free to as well.
You have the floor.
Thank you, with your indulgence. This whole motion around the approval with appropriate parking in Lew is about not ducking the issue. It's easy to hide behind that as a reason for no and then just upstumps. This is about trying to find a practical way to actually get an approval so the project can move forward. And it's certainly not tone deaf to the other issues raised. However, I think we've been over this enough times, that concern is how the planning tribunal might deal with a decision around that. I'll just make a point about Belray, and how we need to get and develop a strong cafe and restaurant culture in Belray. I went down to Belray two Tuesday nights ago, the yacht club was packed with people for a quiz night, and was with my wife, because we had the grandparents down. But we thought we'd be able to waltz into any of the restaurants down there, and they were all full. So let's not kid ourselves that things aren't going well Tuesday night, and you can barely get a table. I had to wait somewhere, actually, and go and wait for a little while to get a seat. So that tells you how things are already going, and it also tells you the pressure that is already on in this area that we are only seeking to enhance. You know, the parking issue at this site hasn't come from nowhere, and without going into what happens in our briefings, we have been briefed on the issues that were faced, and we've been delivered this solution in the report, which we know, I don't think, passes the sniff test. These are the rules, the parking cash in lieu are the rules. It's appropriate to apply them. Let's be fair to everyone and apply the rules. I think, well, I urge people to put their pragmatic pants on and vote for an approval here because of the consequences of any other vote.
Alderman Walker, I do need to speak for doubts in meeting regulations. The chair may only allow a matter to be revisited if, if the vote didn't reflect new information comes to hand, or in the opinion some other vital information has been overlooked. At this stage, I'll take your motive appeal about the density of operations.
What about the email that's still in the ether, waiting to get to?
At this stage, I've accepted that you've brought new information to the table in terms of the business activity and the demand in Belray, but would people around the table please be consistent with that ruling? Thanks.
I'll give a point of explanation on it, Mr Mayor. How do we then, as has been hinted at, return to the officer's recommendation if there's no unity?
Well, in that case, it's been a, by the courtesy of this council that we've done so. Thank you.
I'm sure Alderman Edmunds appreciates that courtesy.
Alderman Walker.
This is a very new situation, because we've road tested three different choices. The motion that was originally listed in the agenda, which wasn't consistent with the SIPs requirement, and mentions an alternative solution using an alternative study. We've had the one that I will come back to shortly, and we've had a refusal, a refusal for, again, a project that I think is really crucial to our city, and whilst not perfect, and not to everyone's taste, I think is, but, so then I come back to where we are now. The second motion that came up, the second motion which is all, is not against, and is for, is supportive of this development, and is just requiring a contribution as per the Clarence Intra and Planning Scheme of 2015. That is what the middle ground looks like. It is justifiable, and I seek your support.
Thank you. Is there any other new information, Alderman Mulder?
Yes, Mr Mayor, the new information I seek is, given your previous advice, has the general manager sought preliminary advice on whether a request for extension would be approved?
General Manager?
Thank you for the question, Alderman Mulder. Through you, Mayor, yes, I did seek that advice, and an extension will not be agreed.
Alderman James?
Sorry, I missed, did you wish to speak? And then Alderman James?
New information or new comment, or that's the?
Well, that's the spirit of being able to revisit the motion.
I just want to tell a story, though, Mr Mayor. Probably about 12 months ago, I set up a new business out at Munna, which is an allied health clinic, and I didn't have to pay a red cent towards parking in Lew. That's because Glenorkie City Council have got themselves organised, they've got decent car parking provided for the community, which obviously build into their rates, so that people can go out there and set up businesses. And when I talk about what's available out there in terms of different businesses, and I talk about how many restaurants there are, there would be 50 or 60 restaurants in that area on either side of the road through there. Now, one thing that's got to come out of this is that we need to get serious about dealing with this parking issue, either way, and that's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Alderman James?
Yes, Mr Mayor, my question through you to the general manager. Mr Nelson, is the developer aware that this council may consider a $420,000 cash, $424, $420,000 cash in Lew for a shortfall in 42 car parking spaces?
Thank you for the question, Alderman James. Through you, Mayor?
No. Thank you.
All right, write a reply, Alderman Edmunds?
Yeah, as touched on previously... Yeah, as touched on previously, they would be acutely aware of it because they've been working so hard on this. I assert that they would be aware of it, and that's why we've got the maths where, where they've come to as presented tonight. Just to comment on the, the stuff around what happens in Moona. First thing first, I think if you tallied up Rosney Park, Clarence Street, and Bell Reef Village would be pound for pound as many and better restaurants in our city. And also the, the comment that it's built into their rates. That's exactly why this policy was developed by a previous council is we don't want to be slugging rate pass for parking when we're providing it for businesses. The, the policy was worked on by our, well, by forebears, and I'm sure some around this table who supported it. And I just urge them to think about their consistency in applying it again tonight because it's, it's what's got us here, and to do away with it now, the appropriate way to remove ourselves from this policy is a motion I've noticed at a, at a general, at a normal council meeting. I really urge people to, as I said, put their pragmatic pants on and get this through.
So the motion is, is again, the officer's recommendation plus the clause from Alderman Walker in regard to parking in Lew. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost, six all.
The officers.
Sorry. So that's lost five, six, one abstained, was it? Thank you. It's been a long night. We'll, we'll call end of the meeting. Thank you very much. You have a little break?